All right, it looks like we're live on the website and on Facebook. So we'll go ahead and get started in just a few minutes. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bonnie Heidler and I'm the Chair of the Pima County Democratic Party. I want to welcome everyone to our second Ward Forum. This is for Ward Six, where we have Steve Kazachek, Andreas Portella, and Miranda Schubert, who will be answering questions today, so that you all can get to know them a little better. I want to thank Miranda Lopez, our Director, and all our support staff at Headquarters who made this happen, as well as all of our support staff who is on here making this happen for you. I also want to thank Greer Warren, who is going to be our moderator today. Greer, take it away.
Okay. Good afternoon, I'm Greer Warren, I'm a PC in LD-10. And I want to welcome you to the Ward Six Democratic Candidate Forum. So, candidates. Good afternoon, my lovelies. Each of you will have three minutes to introduce yourselves. Then I'm going to ask you questions, and each of you will have two minutes to respond. The person who goes first for each question will then have a minute at the end to respond again, if you want to take that. We're going to rotate the order in which the three of you will respond to each question. We're going to be monitoring, I have questions that have been garnered from a variety of sources, as well as from the community on a Google Sheet that we had. And we will be monitoring questions from the Zoom Q and A and from the Facebook Live feed. And at the end of the prepared questions, we'll take those questions from the community if they cover aspects of city government that we haven't covered already. Please note, audience members as well, that we have turned off the Zoom chat, and we will only be monitoring Q and A for this presentation. At the end of the presentation, each candidate will be given an additional three minutes for a concluding statement. Does everybody understand those ground rules? Okay, so, I was going to start with a really, really devastating question that would have caused each of you to talk for 25 minutes, so I've decided to save that for the end. Let's just jump in about infrastructure. No, let's not. Let's introduce ourselves. Mr. Kazachek, you go first.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you all for participating. I see we have 70 people on the call. I know you have the option of spending these next couple hours out in 110-degree heat, so we appreciate you making the hard choice of spending a couple hours with us indoors. I could go through the first few minutes here talking about all the policy issues that are championing, water security, PFAS, 5G gun control. Instead of that, I want to keep it light and respectful. I just want to introduce virtually my staff and kind of tell you what we do here in the Ward Six Office. And to humanize, to humanize the office. Anne is my Chief of Staff. She's a fourth-generation Arizonan. She's also a cancer survivor. She was back to work six weeks after having a bone marrow transplant. Anne and I stood shoulder to shoulder at the Benedictine at Gunby Backs at the Greyhound Station when we were helping migrants through the city of Tucson, and literally hundreds of other events here in town. Diana Amato is also a multi-generational Arizona. She's got four boys. Her husband Marcos probably served, excuse me, TPD, as a TPD officer. Ariel, we poached her from the U of A College of Planning. She's an architect. She's a planning master. And she's a native of Bajo, Arizona. Diego, I met him first over at the Benedictine when he was working with Casalitas. And we crossed paths there, again, helping the migrants and asylum seekers through the community. He is now working half-time in the office and splitting time, again, still working in the Alita Center. I've been in the office, in this office since 2009. Many of you know that I spent time in Zambia, Sri Lanka, Kenya, doing relief work, also driving supplies to Baton Rouge after Katrina. So we're all here serving this community. First and foremost, though, I want to say that these jobs are all about constituent service. What did today look like? Today Anne and Ariel spent time with over 50 residents opening up a new walking path in one of the midtown parks. And Diego is working at the Alita Center. Diana also spent time with residents in another park, opening up a new playground. My day has looked like this. I've had five conversations with constituents and one with Chuck Huckleberry on related issues related to city-county.
Councilman, 20 seconds.
So that's a Saturday morning. We can talk policy, and I hope we do. But my staff and I are number one in constituent work. And it's relationships. These jobs are all about relationships, and it shows in our commitment as a team to this community. We're healing after four years of some pretty divisive politics. And today, and I hope, and I know Andres and Miranda are committed to this all, so that we're going to show the other side that we can do public policy respectfully. So thanks for the time.
Sorry, Greer, you're muted.
I saw that. Need the spacebar, huh, Andres? Thank you, Mr. Kazachek. Andres, Portella, could you please introduce yourself?
Hey, everybody. My name is Andres Portella. I'm the son of a 20-year small-business owner and third-generation Black Tucsonan. That is my mother. My father is a US Army veteran who was honorably discharged because of a spinal injury, but he's from Bayamon, Puerto Rico, so I'm Afro-Latino. As a working first-generation student, I found myself homeless, working full-time and living out of my car as a student athlete at Paradise Valley Community College. So I decided to come back home and attend the University of Arizona with my long-term girlfriend, who is now my wife, today would mark our fifth marriage anniversary. We struggled as renters, as homeowners, but we struggled together. We ultimately were able to use first-time homebuyer programs from the city of Tucson to buy our home in Tormi Park, a predominantly working-class and Latinx neighborhood that was once divided by racial covenants and restricting people of color from living in this space until the 1980s. At the University of Arizona, I was able to learn from experts such as Tom Volgy, who was one of my professors, and Steve Refe about policy that is going to shape the future of our neighborhoods. After college, I was able to work in fair housing and focus on housing policy as well as land use policy. I was afforded the opportunity to work with neighborhood leaders on affordability, gentrification, and displacement. This is the purpose of my platform, which is home, that's housing, opportunity, mobility justice, and environmental justice. Essentially, housing equals keeping Tucson families in their homes. Opportunity, understanding the resources that our neighbors interact with every day, and address them through public health lens. And also inequities. Mobility justice means prioritizing safety in Ward Six, no matter the mode of transportation, through racial justice. And that's going to go hand-in-hand through everything I talk about today. Environmental justice means people and planet first. So here we are. I'm running to be the representative I didn't see. I'm running because words only have power when we act on them. When our shared values as community ground the work we do. The policy suggestions that you're going to hear from myself and Miranda and Steve are only going to be a tidbit of what the future is going to hold for Ward Six. So I'm super excited about the opportunity to discuss policy. I'm a policy person. This is my jam, and I love it. So I'm ready to get started.
Thank you, Mr. Portella. Ms. Schubert?
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to introduce myself. Thanks to the Pima County Democratic Party for holding this forum. And thanks, everyone, for tuning in. My name is Miranda Schubert, and I'm running for Ward Six. I live in Armory Park with my fiancee Amanda and our two cats, and I'm an academic advisor at the U of A. And that's also where I helped to start the Wall-to-Wall Union that includes both ASU and U of A, which is UCW AZ Local 7065. Who am I? I'm half-Chinese and half-German. I'm a queer woman. I'm a feminist. I'm a proud union sister. At the age of 37, I'm a geriatric millennial. I roller-skate and do roller derby. I haven't owned a car for most of my adult life and choose to get around on my bicycle everywhere. I'm running because it shouldn't be so difficult to get by as a regular working-class person in the city, but it's getting harder every year. It's time to take bold and decisive action to address the challenges that we face. And Tucson needs more leadership that clearly and decisively values people over profit or property. My platform consists of four main areas: housing justice, community-centered development, climate change, and public safety. They're all interconnected and based upon the core idea that it's our elected representatives' basic responsibility to center sustainability and equity in all decision-making. Last year, Tucson residents came together and clearly stated their priorities: more affordable workforce housing, more public green space, greater investment in social services to care for our neighbors in need. But that's not what we got in the actual budget. It was disheartening that so many voices in our community were ignored in favor of upholding the status quo. It was clear that Ward Six needed a representative to understand that the equity issues raised by Tucsonans through the participatory budgeting process were more than just a passing fad to weather before falling back into old routines. I saw the need for a leader willing to stick their neck out for these ideas and carry them as priorities, even if engagement flagged. Because while meaningful change takes time, it also demands urgency and persistence. We're proudly running a grassroots people-powered campaign and recently passed the threshold for qualifying for clean election funding. This public matching funds program is what allows a working-class candidate like me to run for office. Like, I wouldn't be able to run for office without this. Full stop. We're also honored to have received endorsements from CWA Local 7000, the CWA Arizona State Council, the Tucson Democratic Socialists of America, Pima County Young Democrats, also Kat Ripley of the Pima Community College Governing Board, who's also one of my mentors, as well as the National Progressive PAC Run for Something. I hope you all will feel free to reach out to our campaign team with any questions, concerns, or feedback. I want to be accessible and easy to approach. I look forward to sharing more of my ideas with you through this forum and also through the remainder of the primary season. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schubert. Okay, now the real questions will start. Sorry for that false start. So we're going to start off with Andres. When talking of infrastructure, the subject of roads takes up a great deal of the oxygen in the room. Other, and people are very concerned about roads. Other than roads, what achievable infrastructure projects would benefit the most people? The most bang for the federal, state, and local buck? And how best to achieve them?
So. That, for me, is a question that I'm going to have to ponder on, but I'm going to give you my initial answer. So really, for us, we're in a pivotal moment because there's an influx of COVID-19 dollars. But before I go into that, I want to understand the question for clarity. So if I'm understanding the question for clarity, the person is asked about infrastructure in the larger sense of we have some issues that we need to fix. And from a city perspective, it's ultimately, it comes down to finance. And so for me, it's going to be looking at those Biden administration funds, which is $2 billion in number, and looking at what we can ultimately do to leverage those funds. So I'm going to trust my experts. I'm going to rely on my community leaders and my neighborhood leaders, which I'm cultivating at this moment. And once I'm installed in this position, you will hear of the Neighborhood Leadership Institute. That is where we're going to take people who are on the ground, doing the hard work, pull them into local government so they feel fully invested, and then pair them with Department of Transportation, pair them with the City Manager's Office, pair them with Housing and Community Development, so we can get issues that are specifically addressing our neighborhood issues. So that's how we get the most bang for our buck. Trusting our neighborhood experts, trusting our experts at the city of Tucson, but also trusting those folks who are also on the council. So for me, what I would like to prioritize is home, and that's housing. And so for me, it's going to be leveraging CDBG funds and other sources that will focus on larger neighborhood development, larger issues such as roads, but also people's access into housing, but also focusing on renters.
10 seconds.
Thank you. Ms. Schubert? You're muted.
Okay, yeah, I got it. Yeah, I feel like somebody could run on the idea of just fixing the roads and sidewalks, and they just, like, win the election. I feel like that's a local punchline. It's really sad. Been taking pictures of sidewalks as I've been out canvassing. Something that I've been really interested in that's been gaining more traction, first of all, I think infrastructure is kind of a weird term that people use in a lot of different ways. But an idea I've seen gaining more traction has to do with considering childcare needs as part of infrastructure for economic, you know, sort of recovery and resiliency. And I think it's really important to consider that, you know, to consider the notion that this isn't a side thing that we should be considering. This is like a core thing that is going to empower our workers, especially when you consider the professions that tend to be predominantly staffed by women, which tend to be the caring professions. And so really enabling women who have childcare needs, who have families, who are maybe caring for other family members, to be able to access the resources that they need to be able to work. And I want to say that part of that includes also rethinking the way that we're doing work and being more flexible and approaching workers as whole people who have needs. I know that in my own workplace at the U of A, it's been really great for the mothers that I work with to be able to have the flexibility of working around when they have to pick up the kids from, you know, from after-school programs or to take them to practice. And I think the more that we can sort of think in that holistic way as we modernize and try to kind of catch up in some ways, I think the better.
Thank you. Mr. Kazachek?
That one's easy. Water security by far and away are the number one, two, and three most important issues for this region, for the state. We have some significant issues, and I hope we can get into them with some more questions later on, not only about water security itself, but about the contamination that we're facing right now as a result of PFAS. I'm the guy who threw a flag on that and got a legal team called Napoli and Skolnik out here from the DC area. And we initiated litigation against 3M and some other product manufacturers who have been selling a product called ATRF to the military installations literally all over the world, but Davis-Monthan out here and also the Arizona International Guard. The result of that is significant contamination that is immediately southeast of two of our main wellfields, our central wellfield and also the wellfield out by our treatment plant, the TARP treatment plant. We just announced a couple of days ago that as a result of the concentrations of PFAS, we're going to have to shut that treatment plant down. That means we're going to have to be pulling water over from Avra Valley to serve about 60,000 of our customers on the northwest side. In the central part of town, the Ward Six area, the Davis-Monthan area, that plume of PFAS is immediately southeast of our central wellfield. We're working with the DoD, we're working with the ANG, the state, talking about sticking your neck out. This is a matter of standing up to those institutions and saying, our ratepayers should neither, number one, have to pay for that cleanup, and number two, have to drink any of it. So we're putting millions of dollars in right now out of our own water utility. It's going to take tens of millions of dollars to fix that. And everybody knows the leak need is right now at 36% of capacity. We're going to have to rely on our groundwater sooner than later. And the PFAS is a situation right now that's standing in front of our being able to rely on that, serve it to our customers safely. So far and away, that's the number-one infrastructure issue that we've got to face right now. We're fighting with the military, the federal government, and product manufacturers to get that cleaned up right now.
Thank you, Mr. Kazachek. Mr. Portella, would you want to take a minute to respond to any of that?
No.
Okay, thanks. Okay. So my next question, and we're going to start with with Ms. Schubert. I have a little preface here. I have to give you people a little background. So affirmative fair housing was a rule promulgated during the Obama administration and rescinded during the last administration. This past week, HUD published a rule that will require every local government that accepts federal housing dollars to make concrete and meaningful commitments towards affirmatively furthering fair housing. By the way, Tucson has an additional protected class beyond the federally recognized classes, which are race, national origin, handicap, and sex. And that additional protected class is sexual orientation. In some places, this could mean developing more affordable housing by relaxing restrictive zoning codes. In other places, it might entail bringing in new services such as affordable public transit to neighborhoods that lack them. Instead of dictating the terms to local leaders, HUD wants local governments to, quote, "identify fair housing barriers that exist within their own communities" and address them through open and honest dialogue that includes representatives from every segment of their population. What would your plan be as a city councilperson for identifying these barriers in the city of Tucson?
That's such a good question. And I just think it's exciting in general to see housing affordability and an acknowledgement that housing is a serious problem that we need to focus on and that we need to do different things about, because it seems like it's been only fairly recently that the conversation tone has kind of shifted to like, oh, it is a problem. Whereas before, I feel like last year in Tucson, we were getting told it wasn't a problem at all. So just acknowledging that, I'll say that this notion of not dictating the terms to local municipalities is really great. It really resonates with me. I definitely am the type of person who sees myself as a leader who doesn't go for cookie-cutter solutions or kind of, you know, across-the-board changes, because even just within Ward Six, the needs, the obstacles, the challenges are so different from neighborhood to neighborhood. Like, even neighborhoods that are right next to each other may have very different ideas of what kinds of housing they need in their own communities. And I see housing is so fundamental to, like, everything else that elected leaders need to be doing. It's one of the number-one things that promotes, you know, the health and safety of the people. And so it's something I certainly spend a lot of time thinking about and learning about. I would certainly empower the experts who are in the Planning and Development Services Department. I think there's a lot of talent and vision and experience and diversity already. And that maybe just takes somebody saying, hey, so what are your dreams? Like, what can we do? What are some needs that you've identified as experts? And I think that also locally Tucson has made great strides in engaging with constituents and really trying to meet people where they're at and civically engage folks who haven't traditionally been involved. I think that's also, like, a central thing that we need to keep in mind, is that there are people we really need to hear from, especially when it comes to housing, that we're not hearing from because they're too intimidated, or they don't even know to reach out and share their ideas. So those are just some initial thoughts I have.
Thank you. Mr. Kazachek?
Yeah, I have a question first. So when Miranda Lopez gives the time, is she saying 10 seconds, 20 seconds? What's the cue?
To the end, to the nail of doom.
No, but somebody's giving us a cue.
That's Miranda Lopez.
Yeah, what's she saying? 10 seconds or 20 seconds or how much?
I'm trying to say 20 seconds.
20, okay, thanks. All right, thanks. All right, cool. Let me tell you what we're doing. The housing market is on fire. That's no question. And it's not in Tucson, it's nationwide. We're seeing houses disappear from the market the day they're listed, and they're selling for above-asking price. So, yeah, we're hard at work trying to ensure people are not priced out of their homes. Number-one goal is housing first, stabilization. We've had that policy in place for several years, not just the last couple of years. We have impact fee waivers that we put in place for affordable housing development. We've ever allocating over $31 million for rent assistance with the county partnership, and we have another tranche of about $30 million that are coming out of ARP money right now. We offer gap financing for home program funds for affordable housing development. I was just in a meeting yesterday with some folks from both Wards Three and Six. And we had a guy who's been very successful in developing affordable housing, principally in Ward Six area. And he's talking about, we were talking about a change in leadership at the Arizona Department of Housing right now. His name is Tom Simplot, and he used to be a city council member in Phoenix. He's going to bring a city-centric focus on ADOH rules right now. They're going to help us to get more li-tech funding down in the Tucson core. We've traditionally seen Maricopa County get eight or nine projects, and we get one or two. Once we can get a population-based policy change, so that'll help Tucson get more li-tech projects. In addition to that, we've got CHIRPA. It's a great program that helps people with maintenance needs around their homes, low-income folks, again, keeping people housed. The city of Tucson has 1,505 public housing units that we operate, another 450 that we operate through HUD. And we've got 5,500 voucher program households that we're servicing right now. So I could go on, running out of time, but we're working with the IDA for gap financing, also working on some projects for city-owned parcels where we could turn some of those into li-tech projects as well. So there's a lot going on. It's a big issue.
Thank you. Mr. Portella?
So. I want to mention a project that I did a few years ago. It's called the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing. And that's extremely important to this conversation, because every few years, the Analysis of Impediments asks our community specifically, what impediments are there to getting fair housing? And our neighborhoods responded. I did over 30 community listening sessions in which people, our community members, our home, told us that the biggest issue when it comes to affirmatively furthering fair housing is source-of-income protections. And I gave that little tidbit the other day during the NAACP meeting. Basically, source of income protection says, no matter where your money Basically, source of an income protection says, no matter where your money comes from, you will have access and opportunity to the neighborhood of choice. It's all about choice. And my second, the second part of my platform is opportunity itself. It's being able to know what resources are available to you at reach. And so we've heard all, this is how, this is fair housing. And and really, as we think through source of income protections, this is something that has been posed to the Housing and Community Development Director, and she supports it. So that's my immediately day one. Let's go ahead and get that to mayor and council because everyone will agree that no matter where your funds are coming from, they should be able to be used to choose neighborhood choice. But also, as we're thinking about the future of Tucson, we know that Lytech will not work. The low income housing tax credit only regulates housing for fifteen years. And and then within that thirty year window, so it regulates it for thirty years, but it's only managed for fifteen years. So really, it comes down to giving a blank check to a developer who can turn it into market rate, very short term. Let's start advocating for 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 alternatives. We have a community development corporation within the city of Tucson that is minority owned in the Biden administration who is actively saying that there are funds available to these to these type of community development corporations. That's how we fund affordable housing, but that's how we focus on fair housing and equitable solutions for long term, long term affordability and not just short term Lytech. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schubert, do you want to, do you want to take your minute to continue this discussion?
I feel like from Mr. Krasakich, what we heard was just kind of a renumeration of what's already been done. I I think I find I find myself curious of what what the other folks would do moving forward. But I still think that, you know, I still think the answers were valuable and I certainly enjoyed listening to them, but I don't really feel that they totally got it, the what the question was asking.
Thank you. Okay. The next question, which has been referred to a little bit earlier. As we know, the residential real estate market is white hot, rents are soaring. Given that both city and county recognize from a study that there is a shortage of available housing, what is your plan for how city policy and programs address the need for additional housing? I am especially interested in hearing about meeting the need for housing, the so-called missing middle in income range and in type. And I think, Mr. Krasakich, you go first.
Well, first of all, I like the idea of keeping people housed for thirty years in a low income situation. So that that's a good idea. We've had this exact conversation yesterday. Right now, we're working with the constables, not only to keep people housed, but also to address that missing middle component. We had people from the both of the city and the county housing departments on. We have over ten thousand requests out right now for rent assistance, for housing assistance. The the reality is that we have millions of dollars, thirty-one plus another thirty coming for it. And that's forward looking to keep people in their homes. The missing middle is the gap financing that we're talking about. It's when when renters raise their rents by a couple hundred dollars a month and price people out of their voucher program, that's the gap that we have to keep people housed on. And that's so we we've talked with Liz Morales, our housing director yesterday. People from the county one stop program as well and are directly addressing that. CIC is prioritizing those most at risk and the, you know, federal rules are being relaxed now so we can address that. One of the, one of the impediments to that in the past though have been rules that have been tied to some of the federal housing programs, both by HUD and some of the state regulations as well. And I mentioned ADOH in my last answer. So getting people, getting people leadership positions at the Arizona Department of Housing and with the Biden administration now coming in, as Andres just mentioned, they're relaxing some of the rules that are going to help us address that gap financing when landlords do come in and price people out of their other rental market. Those are, those are going to be critical to our our addressing that missing middle component.
Thank you, Mr. Portella.
Thank you. Um, I think I think this is a great point of clarification. So as I was stating, keeping people housed for thirty years isn't what I was saying. The low income housing tax credit is only regulated for thirty years. But it stops sending people out after fifteen years. So it is not regulated for thirty years. You could go to market rate after fifteen years, and that's what we've seen. I was briefed about this as as a senior policy advisor for the city of Tucson. I know this. And so as we're thinking about Arizona Department of Housing, that's just name dropping. I've been a speaker at the Arizona Department of Housing on this specific issue. And so we have to start thinking about where we're at in this moment. So prior to working for the city, I was a community organizer. I knew that there there was a difference between differentiated differentiated housing stock and basically where we're at. So I have some ideas to increase that middle. And so here's the problem I've already designed. The solution, here's what I'm focused on. I want to use the Commission on Equitable Housing Development to do away with R one zoning. And that will increase our opportunities for differentiated housing stock. And no, that's not me saying I want a ton of density. That's me saying we need alternatives. I want to use the Office of Equity to install a a public advocate position to make sure we protect our renters. And that's going to be used through the Pima County Eviction Prevention Team. Want to bring them in and use so many of the resources they currently have. We already, we we want to work with Housing Community Development to get those source of income protections. And then we've already seen it in twelve states, including DC. I want to work with Pima County to educate our senior community on the Senior Property Valuation Protection Program, which freezes home values and shields our aging in places from large property tax bills. I also want to prioritize with Housing and Community Development on land banking opportunities. There are tons of options we have to fix that middle housing, but we have to get all of the experts in the room. So we've done that with our Commission on Equitable Housing and Development. We've got folks who are formerly homeless like myself. We have business owners, we have developers. And this was all things that we had the foresight for years ago. And I was happy as a senior policy advisor to champion that, those causes. I look forward to the work to come with housing. It's it's what I love in my life.
Thank you, Ms. Schubert.
So yeah, it was really funny. I was like on a camping trip and my friend had sent me an article about Minneapolis doing away with R one zoning across the board. And we ended up in a very long conversation about it. So I mean, I can totally understand being passionate about housing because it's super complicated. There's a lot of different layers. I think to address the needs that we have as a community as we continue to grow, it's going to take a lot of different tools. And one thing that's constricting us locally is the way that zoning works. Like, we can't just enact inclusionary zoning because of Arizona State ledge. And so I immediately think of things like overlay districts to try to address problems that are associated basically with the fact that you know, fifty-nine percent of our of our land is zoned for single family houses. And as we continue to increase our population, in my opinion, the goal should not be for everybody to be in one house on a big lot. You know, continuing to push out our peripheries. We do need differentiated housing stock. We need more options for folks for different things like aging in place or having kids or working out of your home, you know. This is like the American dream and it cuts across partisan lines, right? People want to live in a house that they're comfortable in, that's close to where they work. And we need to enable them to do that by meaningfully prioritizing that missing middle. Regular folks with regular jobs. You shouldn't have to be rich, but it's so hard to buy a house, especially right now. My fiance and I are working on it and it's incredibly stressful. And our Realtor is really cool because she treats selling a house like social work. And it really is. Because housing is very complicated. And luckily, we do have a lot of experts, you know, in places like the Commission for Equitable Housing and Development, which just recently was resuscitated. And so it's great to see the city meaningfully prioritize these things and I'm all on board.
Thank you, Mr. Krasakich. Do you want your minute?
Sure, you bet. Using the phrase, the Arizona Department of Housing is not name dropping. I think we all learned in the last four years that leadership matters. The Trump administration was just cutting HUD funds to the bone. Well, we have new leadership up of ADOH. And they have a city centric approach to how they're doling out some funds. And Lytech are a valuable tool. It's one of many tools that we're using. That matters and having relationships with people up there matters. We are doing inclusionary zoning right now. The Sunshine Mile overlay is going to be the first overlay that we are, we are incorporating inclusionary zoning. Once we get that through the, you know, through the city council, probably in September-ish. And finally, I would, I would say that the dropping R one zoning, that's going to, as Miranda said, that's a very complex issue. We've got Prop two oh seven hanging over our shoulders and that's a diminution of value and people, we we're going to have to talk some legal, legal issues on that. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's just as easy as using it as a slogan in a campaign. There are some there's some serious implications of that.
Thank you. I'm going to leave this next question off and go to, I'm going to slightly change the topic. And we're going to start with Mr. Portella. In two thousand and twenty-one, city council raised the minimum wage for city workers to fifteen dollars an hour. Following the lead of Flagstaff several years ago, there was currently a citizen initiative circulating to bring the issue to the voters in November in the city to raise the minimum wage throughout the city to fifteen dollars an hour. There was also significant support from the White House. Representative Grijalva has endorsed it. If the Tucson fight for fifteen fails to get enough signatures to put it on the ballot, which could happen, they only have a few more weeks and it could fail for any number of reasons to get those those signatures. What would stand in your way as a city council member to bring it to the city council for a vote? Because city council, as I understand it, has the ability to to make that rule.
So I want to take a ticket this, take a thought through this as an economic development issue. This begins, this began with the city of Tucson taking the lead. And as on the other side, so as a community organizer, a few years ago, I was a part of a group, the group that actually did this. Arizona Prosper, I mean, Arizona Prosperity Alliance. And really, when we sat down, the conversation was a livable wage. And being a part of that group really taught, I got to learn from CEOs and experts in the nonprofit industry, small business and all of these other spaces, the shortfalls of a fifteen dollar minimum wage. And I, 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 I thought that that was a load of crap, to be perfectly honest. And so in the city of Tucson, we took the lead and gave our cities, our our city employees fifteen dollars minimum wage. But that's a good start, but that's not good enough. If productivity kept up with a livable wage, we would be at twenty-three dollars an hour. So in Ward six, we have to look at our gig workers and we have to look at, we have to look at all employees holistically as a fight for rights and compensation. So for me, if this came in front of mayor and council, and I would be willing to champion something like this, my vote would always go behind workers. I know what it's like to live on the bare minimum. I was a student athlete living in my car, working full time and interning for Congressman Ron Barber. And so all of that to say is that if it was brought in for, in front of me as council member, I would champion this cause.
Hey, thank you very much. Ms. Schubert, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Krasakich.
Your question was what would stand in the way of it, of the council, of it coming to the council. It will come to the council if it doesn't get on the ballot. And yeah, I would support it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schubert. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm messing my little. I've sort of, Miranda, have you answered this question? Sorry about that. I read, I've got too many things in front of me. You go ahead.
I know that feeling. So I feel like what the person who's asking the question was trying to get at is what potential obstacles might be in the way of somebody bringing it to city council. And I mean, of course, I would totally champion this as well. I'm really proud to be endorsing the Tucson Fight for Fifteen. And I feel like I'm always bumping into friends out around town, you know, with the clipboards. But I think where my mind first goes is just that some people are mad about it. Some people are mad about this idea that we need to pay people more money. I know I've read some pretty troubling letters to the editor and local publications about this. And in general, there's definitely a mindset that we need to acknowledge exists locally where people don't favor, you know, just raising material conditions for workers without them earning it. You know, these are folks who maybe don't see housing as a human right and are perhaps more worried about people getting handouts than somebody not getting the assistance that they need. You know, like when I was text banking for a Tucson tenants union and we would just text something pretty innocuous about housing as a human right. We want to help renters. Some of the responses I got were really something, just people need to get a job, they need to work harder. We're not here to, you know, pay for other people. And I think this kind of individualistic thinking is really toxic. And that we need to work on breaking that up. And the other important thing to note about Fight for Fifteen is that it also establishes a local office for worker protections. And we know that wage theft is like the number one form of theft that we have, which is incredibly interesting and also very disturbing. And those are also things that I would champion no matter what, you know, worker empowerment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for taking you out of order. So we started Yes, you may respond.
Groovy. And so for me, this is, all of this is going to take a big commitment from the city. And I, right now, I'm not in this position, but I guarantee I'm going to be there in the fall. So here's where I'm at. As we think through understanding where the city is at, we need to know, we need to address potential for race and gender pay disparities. At this time, you can't Google city of Tucson, race, gender, and pay demographics. What I would like to do is this information needs to be democratized. It needs to become readily available, readily accessible. And so as we're thinking through this Office of Equity, I would like for my council member at this, I mean, my, yeah, my council member at this moment to really look at how we get this information publicly accessible. And so I know when I'm in this position, I am going to champion that cause of making sure that everyone has access to understand our demographic data, our race and gender pay disparities that could potentially be at the city of Tucson. If we're going to say that we want to fight for fifteen, we want to fight for workers, then we have to really take that big step.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to be very rigorous here now. Miranda, you go first. Evictions lead to homelessness. We know that. And while there are city shelters for people who are homeless, these shelters are not often equipped or staffed to accommodate many people with disabilities. So I need to know what your plan would be for protecting these very vulnerable people in the case of eviction, for providing appropriate personal care, medication distribution, resources, et cetera, things like that for houseless disabled folks.
Thanks for that question. It's really important. And eviction is something that I'm very much focused on as a part of why I want to run for office. And I also want to say that I think it's sad that we have to talk about this lack of support and lack of funding and that the decisions that we've made up until this point, you know, our local government, our community, the business as usual, the business as usual has gotten us here. This is a status quo where we're concerned about our most vulnerable members of our populations being out on the streets. So all of that is to say, absolutely what this means is that the status quo isn't acceptable. And the way that we have been thinking about things is also not acceptable. What I notice a lot is a really deficit way of thinking where it's, it's always, it feels like people ask the city to prioritize things that are really basic, like homelessness. And it's like, there's not enough money for that, right? There's not enough money for that. There's not enough funding. You know, this place is understaffed. We know that so many shelters turn people out in the daytime and they have nowhere to go. And then there's no public restrooms. There's no trash cans. There's no investment in public works. People get angry when you talk about having running water and showers available for folks who are without a roof over their heads. All of this really needs to change. This is a very, you know, troubling mindset that I've noticed locally. And it's it's definitely, I think, I think it's a minority of people who feel this way and that many more Tucsonans I encounter would really love to see more investment in organizations who help folks with disabilities and mobility issues and to pay caregivers better. My friend just got a job as a caregiver. And it's really depressing the way that we just treat some workers who do the most essential things so poorly and pay them nothing. And they're doing literally the most important jobs. We really need to start challenging this at all levels. And we really need to focus more meaningfully on eviction as a local issue. I think those are my thoughts for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krasakich.
Sure. The the reality check, the city and the county are not going to cure homelessness, but since I took office, we have been partnering with NGOs, the shelters in this community and working this problem aggressively. We have a direct relationship through this office with with Primavera, with Gospel Rescue Mission, with Salvation Army. Sister Jose has just did an expansion that my chief of staff is directly involved with. They do treat the disabled. And SMI has a serious disability. They do treat the disabled, and SMI is a serious disability that they're directly addressing. One of the problems that people have when they, when they, when they talk about homelessness, and I will agree with Miranda, this is a lot of, a lot of negative vibe going around the community when you say the word homeless. Is it a DV victim? Is it a senior who had a catastrophic illness for the first year of their lives, and then all of a sudden out on the street? Is it a veteran with PTSD, a drug addict, SMI, single mom living in her car with kids? All of them fall under that umbrella. And so the, the solution in quotes to homelessness has multiple different answers, because it's an extremely complex problem. We fund a crisis, crisis mobile teams 24/7. Our TPD deflection unit is not in the business of busting people who are homeless. It's getting them into services if they're need and will accept. I work with Emerge all the time with DV victims. In fact, they recognized me as Partner of the Year two years ago. I'm in regular contact with those NGOs and shelters I just mentioned. We do, we do bi-weekly meetings with Tucson Pima County Homeless Coalition. I brought our housing director into it to work on, to work on the issue. We have hotels that we're working right now for both COVID and non-COVID-related, non-COVID-related people who are houseless. So the, the, the question, the question opens up a whole panoply of issues, because homelessness is such a complex issue, and there's not a single silver bullet. But yeah, we're working it. We've been working it hard for the last 10, 12 years. We're gonna keep doing so.
Thank you. Mr. Portella.
I would like to use this moment to ask you to restate the question.
I would be happy to. Evictions lead to homelessness. And while there are city shelters for people that are homeless, these shelters are not equipped or staffed to accommodate many people with disabilities. And some of the things that I'm talking about are providing appropriate personal care, medication distribution. What other ideas could you, what ideas would you implement to improve the lives of houseless disabled folk?
So, as the son of a father with a disability, we can't say the county and the city won't ever solve this issue. And when we talk about homelessness, we can't have that mindset. That mindset is outdated, and it will not work for the future of Tucson. So, we, and we also can 100% trust those who will benefit from homelessness being an issue to solve the issue. That's putting yourself out of business, and I don't really foresee that happening. So as we talk about homelessness, we need to have the tough talk about Tucson that isn't normally breezed over. I want to point to 2012. I graduated from high school, but on this day, this exact day, at 10:00 AM, the police were removing homeless camps from Vinte de Augusto Park on this day because of occupied Tucson. So for the future of Tucson, we're gonna require a housing expert who has humanity. I know that person. His name is Andres Portella. He's been, he lived in his car. At 3:00 AM, people would knock on his window and tell him to move it. And so really, here's the solutions I want to provide, because I'm thinking through this problem, solution, solution. I spent the last two years creating the space to tackle this specific issue, our Office of Equity and our Commission on Equitable Housing and Development. This is how we create power. This is how we create timelines. This is how we create real solutions. My solution is to work with our Housing First Coordinator and the Pima County 10-Year Plan to End Homelessness. That Housing First Coordinator will focus on getting folks in housing first, and then provide those wraparound services, such as mental health assistance, addiction, and so many other services. But truly, it starts with housing first. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schubert, would you like your minute?
Yeah, I just wanted to add also, you know, shelters, wraparound services, very important stuff. I also know that I've heard a lot from folks in the community who work on issues surrounding homelessness and displacement about the nonprofit industrial complex and how the government has come to over-rely upon it to cover a gap in essential services. So I think it's also important to acknowledge that we need to look at the reasons why people are facing eviction in the first place, and to note that housing costs have gone up so much and wage hasn't kept pace. I know so many people who used to be able to live in the city's core who've had to move to other neighborhoods and other wards because they can't afford it anymore. I have a friend who I like that I just canvassed with the other day, whose landlord is raising the rent. She's gotta move. So we also need to look at those root causes of why people are facing eviction in the first place.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we're gonna start with Mr. Kazachik. Currently, there is no ADA transition plan accessible to the public on the city's website. While other municipalities such as the city of El Paso have detailed plans that cover all city departments and services, how would you, as a city council member, ensure that the city meets its federal mandate to produce an updated and visible comprehensive ADA transition plan?
Sorry. The, the first step is that the, the city has an absolutely archaic computer system. Our online presence is obsolete. We have computers that are 10, 12, 15 years old in offices all over, all over the city. And less than until we get that infrastructure improved, that, the answer to that is we can't do it. And that's not an acceptable answer. Colin Boyce is our IT director. He's a quality guy. He's bringing some creative solutions and into the office. We have monthly, weekly meetings with him and the city manager to talk about IT infrastructure upgrades. But that's, that's the basic issue right there, is that we don't have the infrastructure from an IT perspective to make that happen. So that's the first solution.
Okay, Mr. Portella.
So, can you please restate the question?
Happy to. Currently, there's no ADA transition plan accessible to the public on the city's websites. While other municipalities such as the city of El Paso have detailed plans that cover all city departments and services, how would you, as a city council member, ensure that the city meets the federal mandate to produce an updated, comprehensive, and my editorial comment, visible ADA transition plan?
Yeah, this is a very visible issue. And for me, it starts in a few different places. So defining the problem itself. That has just been done through the question. The solution that I can provide is using the Commission on Equitable, I mean, the Commission on Disability Issues, or CODI. Right now, our commissions serve in an advisory function. And so for me, it's really being in that space as a, as a council member. And so for me, I will embed myself in that space. But also, it does come down to what Steve says, modernizing the city of Tucson and having that continuity of service. That's step two. But also, it comes from working with our community partners and walking our neighborhoods. And so, as I, as I've been walking my neighborhoods, I have been told about buckled sidewalks, inaccessibility around accessing our neighborhoods. And those are all issues that come from a comprehensive planning process. And it comes from having those people who have disabilities in the room and using their expertise on, on the Commission on Disability Issues, but also making sure that once we get the complaint, or someone saying that this is an issue, we have a way to keep that continuity throughout the city of Tucson of addressing the issue specifically.
Thank you. Ms. Schubert.
I agree with both of these answers. I think that the city's website and systems are definitely long overdue for an upgrade. I'm so excited about all the modernization that's happening. I'm excited to hear about sort of constituent service tracking system that's gonna be implemented and like hooked into other municipalities. I also think that, you know, meaningfully including community members who are most impacted by these plans is very important. And it's the same thing. It's walking the neighborhoods. I totally agree with that. You know, how many times we walk the neighborhoods and just seen the little corner that's got the concrete because of ADA compliance? And then there's a gap, and there's a bunch of gravel. You know, just how, how sad it is every time we see someone who's using a scooter and having to be in the bike lane, you know, with, with opposing traffic coming. These things are unacceptable. And so I think it is about kind of modernizing and bringing Tucson into the present and saying, we need to overhaul our system so that information is readily available, easy to navigate, and clear, and welcoming. Because it also doesn't feel welcoming when you can't find information easily on a website. And we also need to meaningfully include community members and empower them to be a part of the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kazachik, would you like your one minute?
Well, part of it, you know, sure. So we're, we're all in agreement on this, is that the backbone of the problem is the backbone of our infrastructure system, and it's a dog. You know, we, we get that. The, the other piece, though, I want to mention is that saying city and county aren't gonna solve homelessness is not an old-school notion, or whatever Andres called it. It's basically saying, we have partnerships, and we have to rely on partnerships. It's all of the above. It's city, county, it's NGOs, it's, it's the shelters, and it's relationships that we have up the food chain, in the funding sources, both state and federal. We have some great partnerships at the state level right now who can help with funding ADA accessibility issues. Most importantly, the Biden administration is, is about to put out some more funds that are gonna help in some of the infrastructure issues that Miranda was mentioning. But without the dollars, it's, you know, the city can't fund all this on its own.
Good, thank you. Okay, so my next question, we're gonna start with Mr. Portella. The Move Tucson website, which is a city of Tucson, I don't know if I called it, is in an initiative. I don't know what, how to phrase it, but Move Tucson website says that, quote, "The city of Tucson is preparing a citywide transportation master plan that will create a mobility footprint for the city's future in a rapidly changing world." Now, in surveys by Move Tucson, there were at least two surveys. One of the surveys asked respondents to top-prioritize issues that, of interest to them in, in priority order. These were safety for bikers and walkers, sidewalks, especially for people in wheelchairs, and the like. And there was a second survey where this respondent for the survey on how to spend limited resources prioritized two completely different things, which was road maintenance and public transportation over issues such as biking and walking and rolling. How can the city council reconcile these different, how should the city council reconcile these differences that are inputs from the public on what's important to them, what they personally feel are the priorities, and what the money should be spent on? Can these things be reconciled, and should they be reconciled? And we're gonna start with Mr. Portella.
Thank you. I want to use a few seconds to revisit that last question, then I promise you I'll answer the next one. So the city of Tucson was audited some years ago by the Department of Justice for not addressing these issues. And we haven't heard in this current position any suggestions for ADA accessibility. And so, and we could be audited at any time, so it's extremely important to bring that to the forefront. So as we also started thinking about the Move Tucson initiative, we have to keep that in the forefront. So what I heard is we need to address safety sidewalks for wheelchairs and road maintenance. And so if you look through my platform, I have a, it says "mobility justice", thinking beyond the car-centric model, because I've been hit on my bike four times as someone who just rides through our neighborhoods. I ride a moped, and my wife constantly is saying that she fears for me to, for me to get hit, to be perfectly honest. So, uh, this is really the time where we start to prioritize some things. So I have some ideas. So, I want to make sure I'm answering the question. So with our next RTA funds, what I'd like to do is focus on residential street repair and not expanding our roads. Generally, what we do is we focus on what we can do to make things bigger and move faster. I want to protect those folks who do have differentiated forms of mobility. That comes from wheelchairs. My niece actually rides in a wheelchair. Me, who rides a bike, a walker of the neighborhood. And we've seen this come up so much since the last year from COVID-19, people experiencing their neighborhoods in so many different ways. And we saw a real solution, which is our Slow Streets Initiative. And I was so grateful for that, because it allowed our neighborhoods to go, it allowed our neighbors to go outside and enjoy our streets and differentiated experiences. But we had to trust the lived experience of those who are living in our neighborhoods. And ultimately, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to prioritize justice as we develop Ward 6. And I'm gonna prioritize making sure that our community feels that we're effectively spending these, these dollars on our neighborhood streets. That's my priority.
Thank you. Ms. Schubert.
I feel like what the asker of the question was trying to get at was, as a leader, how would you prioritize the seeming conflict between what the popularity of some of the answers was versus the top? Was that, can, are you able to?
Yeah. Basically, what I took from it was that the, there were two surveys. One asked people to top-prioritize out of a list the things that they thought were most important. And the answer to that was safety for bikers and walkers and sidewalks. But the second survey is, how would you spend limited resources? And that ended up being road maintenance and public transportation.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I'm just asking, should those be reconciled? Can they be reconciled, since the public, that was the public's input?
Yeah, no, I agree. It's a really good question. And I think that it gets to some of the skills that I think leadership really demands in this moment as we're facing a climate emergency, and as we're having a growing awareness of the need to meaningfully incorporate sustainability and equity in all of our decision-making. So I think, I think what it comes down to is we're balancing leadership with representation. So the representation piece is the feedback from the surveys. You know, what are your priorities? If you didn't have a whole lot of money to spend, what would you spend it on? That definitely needs to be taken into account, but the leadership piece is what says, well, yeah, road maintenance is important. We know that, you know, our roads are, most of our roads are failing, but they're also underutilized, which points to a problem of strategic planning and being intentional. We also know that equity is a problem, that we have a lot of folks who are really struggling to make ends meet, and that we need to do more to lift up non-auto-centric forms of transportation, to make public transportation more viable. Bikeability and walkability, these are equity issues. And so I think that that's where the balance comes in, is saying, yeah, you're totally right. But also, if we're gonna make a list, it, it needs to be through the lens of sustainability and equity. And also, meaningfully including the neighborhoods who are most affected by this planning, the folks who live in the areas where this planning is taking place.
Thank you. Mr. Kazachik.
Sure. The, the answer is that there are different funding sources for the different needs. The road, the road repair is a multi-millions of dollars worth of issue. The other mobility issues that we are funding, in fact, I just allocated another $200,000 out of our ward budget for our green stormwater infrastructure and road projects within neighborhoods. So the, the funding sources are different. Andres mentioned the RTA. We may not have another RTA if they, if they don't get on board with some of the city, city, I'll say demands, but that's probably the wrong word in the moment, that we, we want changes for RTA Next. Now, that, if that fails, some of the changes include weighted voting flexibility in, in the projects, some pavement repair. Seven or eight years ago, when I said that the RTA ought to be doing road repair, all the people on the pag board said I was trying to blow the RTA up. Now they're on board, seemingly, because they recognize that's a priority for the residents of this community. And if the residents of this community don't support RTA, it's gonna fail at the ballot box. So that, so if it does fail, we are right now having conversations. In fact, this week, we announced that we are going to have an election for the extension of Prop 101, which is our road-public safety bond, next May. And so we're timing it so that we can see how the RTA conversation plays out. If that falls on its face, then we have Prop 101 coming, where, where we will be talking about allocating half-sent sales tax or some portion thereof for road reconstruction. So, or road repair, I mean. Andres is right. The RTA right now is an archaic model, simply building on capacity and not putting any, any dollars in for road repair. That was one of the failures the first time around, and we're gonna fix that this time, either through RTA Next or through our own funding sources, through a city of Tucson extension of Prop 101.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Portella, do you want to take your minute?
Yeah, I do. I want to take this moment to talk about racial justice and really what that is in, in regards to transportation. And I went ahead in, in the first few weeks of my campaign, talking about how we make, make our, our communities more accessible and safe. And I think that really comes with the through line of racial justice throughout my mobility justice campaign. And so for me, I would like to look at cities like Philadelphia and Washington, who have taken a planning process and strategic frame of, of mobility and transportation, but also racial justice, to look at ways to delegate some of their responsibilities from their police force to intentional planning for Department of Transportation. And so for me, that's, that's what I want to focus on, is take a racial justice approach. But also, use those $2 billion that are gonna come from the Biden administration, and also use them for safe, drinkable, and clean water. But I also want to focus on a bus rapid transit system that gets us through Ward 6 safer and faster. I want to focus on residential street repairs and not expanding roads. I want to focus on expanding bike boulevards, complete streets, Slow Streets Initiative, and arts and murals, but also make sure we but also make sure we keep public transportation free beyond just the end of this year. And so I'm super energized about this. And if you want more information about that, that's on my website. Thank you.
Excited, what can I say? Okay. So Miranda, we're going to start with you. And this, several of you touched on this topic in, in your last answers, but the regional transportation plan, this is, I want to ask this question because a lot of people listening and watching today may not know some of this stuff. So the regional transportation plan, RTA, is the voter-approved 20-year regional transportation and mobility policy plan. Tucson is one, the city of Tucson is one of nine members of the board. The plan will go back to the voters in 2026. There are several schools of thought currently as to whether the city of Tucson should continue as one among equals or if it should have a stronger voice in the plan, given that 40% of the voters to reauthorize and pay for the plan in 2026 will live in the city of Tucson. What is your position on this and why? Ms. Miranda?
Thank you. I don't have anything controversial to say about this. I'm on board with folks who are calling for considering Tucson as it is, you know, the heart of Pima County, deserving more, more of a weighted vote to sort of make planning more effective. And I also want to call attention to and elevate Families United gaining accessibility. They have a petition out right now about RTA Next where they have some very specific ideas about ways to meaningfully integrate sustainability and equity. My understanding is that a lot of folks feel that they don't want to be on board with another RTA plan unless those things are meaningfully prioritized. And that includes public transportation. I also definitely support keeping transportation, public transportation free forever. And also bikeability, pedestrian safety. I definitely don't support, you know, large-scale road widenings. Those are not effective. We have plenty of information or research that shows us that these are not effective ways to alleviate traffic problems or increase the ability of folks to move from point A to point B in our city. You know, I've ridden the bus. When I first moved to Tucson, I was, I was busing from High Allen neighborhood to Desert Vista Campus and Pima College, and it was an hour and a half each way and two transfers. It's just not acceptable. I think it's about 12 miles, you know, so that we could be doing more to nurture these other modes of transportation and make them viable for folks. And so I think that those things really need to be funded and we need to stop thinking of them as expenses and think about them as investments instead worthy of, you know, resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kazachik.
About eight years ago, I stood with a group of residents out at the corner of Broadway and Campbell protesting the Broadway widening. That was the RTA's plan to create an eight-lane, 150-foot-wide chunk of asphalt that would pinch down to two lanes when it got to downtown. That is from Euclid Country Club. We were, in air quotes, "successful" in skinnying that up to about 120 feet, 124 feet, saving over 150 local businesses and historic buildings along the Sunshine Mile. That was a small win, but the impediment to us win was the PAG board, was the RTA. We were threatened with them pulling $25 million worth of funding if we didn't, if we didn't finally agree to their alignment proposals. And so we eventually wound up where we are now. The Sunshine Mile will wind up being lemonade out of lemons, but any 20-year-old regional policy can justify a facelift. The, the city of Tucson is asking for changes. We're, we're not trying to blow up a regional coalition. What we're doing is we're saying that since 2006, things have changed. People aren't getting around the same way. We, we are 40-something percent of the regional, regional population. We deserve that weighted voting. To, to avoid another Broadway fiasco, build some flexibility into the plan. So we're not trying to predict 20 years down the road how people are going to be getting around. Pavement repair, repair completely has to be a part of the next plan. Allocation of dollars should, should, should mimic the, either population and/or tax base of the jurisdiction being a part, participating in the RTA if one passes next time. And there are categorical, category, did you say a time or 20 seconds?
20 seconds, sorry.
There, there are categorical areas as well, and some of those relate to safety and ADA and mult, and different transit modes. The city of Tucson can determine which of our priorities appear on the ballot, not the city of Morana. And that's another thing you're talking about now, is having sort of a, a regional discussion about which projects appear on the ballot. We know what our constituents want. We'll make that determination the same way Morana and Oro Valley can make it for their own constituents.
Thank you. Mr. Portella.
Thank you. And Miranda, you, you're Miranda Lopez. You remind me of when heard from, goodness, Parks and Recreation, when they're like 20 seconds, and then they keep explaining that it's 20 seconds, 30 seconds. So going off of that, for me, I would advocate for a larger seat at the table for the city of Tucson. And for me, it comes down to equity and transportation. I believe that this is a, a region we should invest in public, uh, public transportation to make our decisions rooted in justice and equity. So when we think about the role of RTA is going to play in the city of Tucson in the future, we have to allow our mayor to have the flexibility, but also our Department of Transportation and our community leaders that are going to come from my Neighborhood Leadership Institute to have the largest seat at the table, because we haven't. I believe that the, that with this next process, we have to prioritize our neighborhoods, our neighborhood streets, environmental equity, our environmental and climate standpoints. So our residents make up 50% of the region, region population, uh, population, but also 63% of them are Hispanic or Latino. 81% of the region relies on public transportation. The future of, of Southern Arizona, but largely RTA and in this space, is multimodal. So as I walk the streets in Ward Six, I hear prioritizing transit at low cost. I hear prioritize bike boulevards. I hear prioritize art projects. I, in, in ways that Tucson, to make Tucson more multimodal. And then we have to create a future for these funds. We have to create managers that are responsible, responsive and forward-thinking. And so thinking beyond just RTA, and that's really where it goes into that Biden administration, $2 billion. I'm going to keep saying that till, till I lose, till I go blue. But really, it's looking at those differentiated sources so that we can ensure that Southern Arizona, Tucson, and specifically Ward Six are multimodal. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schuber, do you want your minute?
Yeah, thanks. Just because we mentioned Broadway and Broadway is the bane of a lot of our existences right now when it comes to traveling from point A to point B. I just wanted to call attention to the fact that Complete Streets, which has come up a few times in conversation today, also talks about safety of, you know, bicycles and pedestrians around construction zones. And right now Broadway is so dangerous. You know, I was trying to bike from, you know, Reed Park to Himmel, and it was, it was horrible. I was so mad the whole time. And it was hot because there was no tree coverage, no shade canopy, another Complete Streets thing. So I just wanted to call attention to the construction zone thing because I've talked to so many constituents about that. The other thing is, you know, the incumbent wrote an op-ed recently about RTA made some excellent points, but I was disappointed to not hear any mention of sustainability or equity, which are points that Mr. Portella made that I agree with.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we're going to start with Mr. Kazachik. Apparently, I have been inconsistent in referring to the candidates. This has been called to my attention, that some of you, I'm calling you by your first names, and some people I'm calling Mr. or Ms. I think it's because I'm old and confused, so do not take this personally. I think I look at the two young people, I think, oh, these are young. Shouldn't do that. So I'm just going to call everyone by their first name from now on. Are we good with that? Okay, good. All right. So next question, Steve, you're going to start. We are in a mega drought. If you have lived in Tucson for more than 20 years, you will have noticed that the heat island phenomenon is now real in the city of Tucson. How can the city balance the environmental cost of growth with the economic realities of growth? And then I'm going to have another question after this about incentivizing. So don't go down the incentivizing thing too, too much, but environmental cost of growth versus the economic realities of growth in a place where we have no, where we have decreasing amounts of water and, and we're in a mega drought that we don't know where the end of it is. Is that a big enough question for everybody? Steve?
Yeah, I think I understand what you're asking. Since 2009, we've done an excellent job of making groundwater. We take our full 144,000 acre feet of water, of cap water every year. We serve about 100,000 of the acre feet and we store another 44,000. Also, through our, our tiered rate structure, we're incentivizing conservation, our tiered water rate structure. Our current potable water use, and this is a credit to our, our residents, is at 1994 levels despite our population growth. We, with, with zero, with zero Colorado River water, we have about a 40-year supply. Now, the, the asterisk on that, banked, the asterisk on that is, is what happens with, with the climate, with the growth and, and also with PFAS. I mentioned that at the beginning on the infrastructure question. We shut down 18 wells. We are, we are shutting down our tar facility, so that's a real issue. But the, the issue of, of water resiliency is something that we have been all over at the council level for as long as I've been on here, and we're going to continue to. Now, we don't need to incentivize growth. We have a very, very progressive obligated-to-serv policy that has drawn a ring around where we're, where we're proposing water connections or we're authorizing water connections. So, and we got pushed back from, from all the regional partners on that. We're having a very fluid conversation about differential water rates as well. It's, that ties right into that obligated-to-serv policy that we have in place. So we're not, we're not, we're not looking to sprawl. We have a very progressive water policy and our, and our residents have been extremely, extremely supportive in our conservation efforts. In 2020, we saved 34.8 million gallons of water through our conservation fee and the rebates that we offered for that. So we're, we're on this issue and we have to be even more on it with a, with the, the whole PFAS question that's coming, coming fast down the pipe.
Thank you. Mr., oh, no, not Mr. Andres.
And Greer, please don't call yourself old. You're like, I'm going to just, I'm going to just adopt you as my auntie from here on out. So I'm going to just call you auntie. So with, with everything that I've talked about, you've heard the word justice. You're going to hear justice when I talk about water too. So part of my platform is environmental justice, and it's because I've seen generations deep the effects of not addressing climate change or the environment within the city of Tucson. My mother tells me anecdotal stories of the ti, of times where it, it religiously, it rained at 3:00 PM in the city of Tucson and in Southern Arizona. But also, there's a data story to be told. The Poverty and Urban Stress Report showed us that communities of color are, are going to bear a disproportional rate when it comes to climate change. So for the future of Tucson, it's going to be dependent on our water. Water is a, is part of it, but it, it doesn't require one personality. It requires someone with persistence. It requires a group with persistence and the ability to call in rather than call out. So cleaning up the messes from Davis-Monthan is, is required, but also looking at our Green Stormwater Infrastructure Fund is, is something that I've, I've, I've thought about is really prioritizing equity while reducing the heat island effect, flood reduction through prioritizing watersheds, expanding the tree canopy and making sure we're, we're doing this consciously. And so those are my thoughts around this as I'm, as I'm going through it now. But also some other suggestions are a stormwater utility rate, stormwater utility at a rate to comply with, that will comply with both city and state law. And so those are some of my thoughts right now. And as we think through all of this, I think we need to go through a, a clean economy frame of planning process. So a green master planning process that incentivizes economic initiatives, Planning Development Services, Department of Transportation and the Housing and Community Development, bringing all those folks in with our Neighborhood Leadership Institute to talk about infrastructure funding for stormwater and long-term solutions for repair, but also using Housing and Community Development to build a net zero and to focus on monitoring PFAS continually. But we don't need a personality for that. We need a group, a coalition to do that.
Thank you. Miranda?
Thanks. So I have a whole, so the question had to do with the environmental costs, with growth, with the drought. We are reading so many articles every day about our dwindling water supplies and how dire it is, right? And so I think my first, the first place my mind goes is how we're characterizing cost and something that I feel strongly about when it comes to leadership is that money is only one cost. And when we're talking about something like an environmental cost, I think that needs to be weighted more meaningfully in a lot of the decisions that we're making. I totally agree with the incumbent that we don't need to incentivize growth. I also believe it takes coalition building. And I'd love to call attention to the Our Water Tucson proposal for implementing differential water rates for folks in the unincorporated areas. We're the only municipality in Arizona who doesn't have this, by the way. I heard the incumbent say that it was a fluid conversation, and I want to hope that that was a pun intended. But what this, what this differential rate would do is charge a higher rate to folks who are living outside of the city limits. Because the fact of the matter is, there is a true cost to delivering water to these peripheries, the environmental cost being the greatest, but also literal money cost as well. And what I really love about this policy is the way that it meaningfully integrates equity and sustainability. So the sustainable piece, I've already talked about, the equity piece is that the revenue from these differential rates would go to canceling the water debt for over 10,000 families. It's around like 3 million or something in water debt that's accrued since the pandemic hit. Also offsetting costs for low-income families and expanding funding and access to low-income assistance for families who need it. And that includes things like getting rid of certain application requirements to make it easier to access because the folks who need it the most are the least likely to even know a program like that exists. And then the final thing has to do with installing climate resiliency features. And also, I think, making those more widely available to folks who don't really have the money normally to do that kind of stuff, like stormwater harvesting and gray water systems and things like that.
Thank you. Steve, do you want your minute?
I don't want to get off track of your question, so rephrase it, reread it.
Yeah, so we're talking about the mega drought and heat island, et cetera. How can the city balance the environmental cost of growth with the economic realities of growth?
Okay. Well, first of all, yeah, all annexations are not created equally. The, I voted against a 2,000-acre annexation of a community, a planned community development out on the east side, specifically because of the issue that we're talking about right now. At some point, enough is enough and too much is too much. So, so we're not, we're not just looking to grow. I also don't want to, and maybe we'll get a question on differential rates later. I don't want to have it mischaracterized that I was embracing them necessarily. I'm saying that's an issue that we have in front of us right now, and it is a fluid conversation, both senses of the word. And happy to answer that question when it comes to it, so. But as far as the, as far as the balancing is concerned, our, our rainwater harvesting program has been, has been very successful since it started. We've, we've saved over three and a half billion gallons of water as, as a result of those rebates. The Green Stormwater Infrastructure Program is immensely successful. In fact, Ward Six has more applicants than we have money right now. It just shows how all in on, on the concept people are. They want to take control over the, of the sheet flow and the stormwater runoff in their neighborhoods, and we're helping them do it.
Thank you. Okay, so this next question, again, involves a little bit of a prefatory comment by me, and it sort of sounds complicated, so I apologize in advance for that. The city of Tucson has a long history of using business incentives such as, sort of like tax giveaways, to lure jobs here from other cities. One of the tools for this is the Gplat, the Government Property Lease Excise Tax, which is essentially an eight-year property tax abatement. The city's Gplat program and the proposed expansion of the Central Business District, which is a term of art, have come under fire from multiple citizen groups. This kind of rose to a bit of a fever pitch last fall, as I recall. The list of granted Gplates on the city's website has not been updated since December 2019, but they have been continued to be granted since 2019. And this may go to Steve's infrastructure comment a couple of questions ago. There was a call by neighborhood groups that no new G-plates during the pandemic should be granted, but they were continued to be granted by city council. G-plates have been blamed for neighborhood destruction, rising rents, and gentrification by these activist groups. What is your opinion of continuing business tax incentives like the G-plat? If you agree that the practice should continue, how would you address the the problem of of hearing neighborhood concerns and making the process more transparent? So sorry, it was a complicated question. Andres, you go first.
Oh goodness, I didn't know that was first in order, but that's cool. No, no, it's fine. A few years ago, I was a part of BNC, Barrios Neighborhood Coalition. And I was very vocal about my stance about the G-plat back then. I was 100% against it. And I am going to say at this moment, as as I worked for the city of Tucson as a senior policy advisor, my job was to was when we began the conversations around the G-plat and how it is used more, how it could be used more effectively. We came to a point where we put it to the community and the community again said no. And that was all due to a lack of transparency. We don't know if it was an effective tool to make sure that these these companies that received the G-plat are falling through with their obligation. Their obligation is to raise the property value, but it's of course an easy job to raise the property value if you're developing on an empty lot. And so for me, I would love to relook at the process for for getting a G-plat. And I have a really good track record of doing that as the senior policy advisor. My I I worked with community on community benefits agreements for two G-plat processes. And ultimately, those G-plates fell through. But what really allowed me to do is understand where the community can activate in ways that we haven't activated before. We can ask our communities, how do we prioritize traffic safety and other forms of mitigation to make sure the investment actually comes to our communities and not just stall the money? We don't get anything from it. And so for me, I would not support a G-plat until I see a clear outcome that is going to benefit our neighborhoods and our communities.
Thank you. Miranda, you're next.
I just want to preface this by saying that two minutes is so not enough time to answer this, but if anybody is anybody's really that interested in talking G-plates and CBD with me, please email me afterward. I want to talk about it. Those protests that reached a fever pitch last fall, I was there. I was there holding a sign in my Coalition for Academic Justice t-shirt. And my enthusiasm was at a fever pitch for all of this stuff. And it's so it's so great to see where we are now, the way that the conversation has shifted. So one of the things that happened was that there was a realization that folks were saying that gentrification displacement had occurred. Other folks were trying to gaslight them and saying it wasn't happening. So council member Santa Cruz had an equity study done by Gary Pivo, which took a few months and we were all anxiously awaiting. I like texted five friends when it came out, the Pivo studies out. And he, it's fascinating. I recommend everybody take a look at it. He looks at all of these different aspects of, you know, what the effects of the central business district were, you know, what was the quality of life like for people? Yes, jobs were created, but they weren't, you know, jobs that paid a livable wage because it was stuff that catered to the tourism industry like hotels. So housekeepers, front desk staff, folks who can't afford to live in the neighborhoods where these projects are being built, which is totally unacceptable. So this study really uncovered a lot of gaps in tracking and monitoring. And so certainly as the council member, I would be on board with implementing rigorous tracking. And also, you know, as as Andres said, re retooling, you know, the G-plat application process, which is actually an active conversation that I've been keyed in with with the historic Fourth Avenue Coalition. In my mind, a very influential local group that does a lot of great work around community engagement and economic development. And so I think the bottom line is that Tucson is a treasure. We're an amazing place. Folks who do business here have the privilege of doing business in our communities. They're joining our communities and should be good neighbors, and that should be a balanced power dynamic, not developer-heavy.
Thank you. Steve.
So yeah, two minutes is not enough.
No, we agree with that.
On most of these, the central business district is not just a term of art. It's it's designed by statute. It's identified by statute. And I won't try and quote the statute to you, but it but it is what has this what has determined the perimeter of it. We just went through an extensive public outreach and neighborhoods opted in and neighborhoods opted out. Because some saw the value and some didn't. The Pivo study did not valid did not validate that the G-plat was causing displacement. It did identify, as Miranda pointed out, the need to do to do more aggressive follow-through on whether or not they were delivering on their promises. And one of the reasons that that's important is because we're bound by a state constitutional gift clause, which simply says that if the city cannot give away, give away in quotes, incentives that don't yield back to the taxpayers equal or more benefit in terms of economics. So the G-plat has been following that gift clause model all along. Now, I will also point out this, and this is a conversation I did have with the authors of the Pivo study. They cited one particular project called the Cadence Project. It was one of the first ones that received the G-plat. It's a student housing project downtown, saying that they didn't create the jobs or that they were necessarily promising to do, and criticized the G-plat as a tool as a result of that. The reality is that in 2009, 10, and 11, we were coming out of a recession. The economy demanded a wholly different set of a set of parameters in terms of how we were going to bring downtown back from the from the recession than when we are where we are now. Back in 2009, lending institutions were demanding before they lent money to development through a project that would create jobs, that the city had some skin in the game. That's where the G-plat came from. We're in a different market situation right now. That's the reason we took a new look at it. Projects such as the downtown Clifton, small little local project by Bonique Lane absolutely required that tool. There's to other projects such as the Cadence don't, and that's the reason we took a new look at it because the market shifted, and therefore our thinking shifts.
Thank you. Andres, do you want your minute?
Yes, I do. And I want to take this opportunity to to think about where we were when the G-plat was 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 coming about in Tucson. And we all we were we were prioritizing business, but it was under a different mayor. And and as we were thinking about the future of Tucson and equity as a larger push, we have to look at the central business, central business district and the expansion costs. So and and we have to think about these costs beyond the financial costs, both direct and indirect. This never, these conversations never include social and opportunity costs, but also racial and social costs. When you think about how the map bordered Barrios Sinombre, which if you look in the definition itself of what what the expansion would look like, it outlined our neighborhoods as blighted, low income, crime, and communities of color. And so really, the language itself was through a white supremacy lens. So we need to include these processes. We need to reevaluate them and look at what does equity look like when we put forth a G-plat, when we vote on a G-plat, and when we see it through to fruition. And so for me, it's a racial justice issue.
Thank you.
That's time.
Okay. Hmm. All right, I'm going to ask this because I think people are interested. Well, I'm very interested in this. We've touched on this topic a little bit before. The city's very recent decision to shut down a critical south side water treatment plant due to untreatable and persistent carcinogens in the groundwater table has citywide ramifications, not just for the south side. How, where, and when will the city make up for this loss of drinking water and what will it cost? Oh, I'm sorry. Miranda, you go first.
Thank you. I think it's important to point to the importance of collaboration amongst different levels of government when it comes to this issue. My understanding is that the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality is the primary driver of the actions in this case in terms of cleaning this stuff up. And I also have heard a lot about how there does need to be more investment. My understanding is that there's a revolving fund that there's some legislation that's pending to get those fully funded. Andres Canno, you know, proposed, I forget the HP, but um at any rate, part of I think it's a multi-level, you know, situation that requires collaboration and conversation amongst different stakeholders, because at the core, what the issue is, is the safety of the constituents that we serve as public servants. And so it certainly seems that everybody is taking notice. There's a big press conference. I've seen a lot of coverage of this. And so I think it's great that people are paying attention to this issue. And I would just point to the to the importance of city, city government is only one layer of the solution that it takes to address that problem.
Thank you. Steve.
So this is more than a conversation. This is a fight. And the fight is with the product manufacturers, 3M and others. It is a fight with the Department of Defense. It is a fight with the State Air National Guard because they are the ones who are the cause of this. The city of Tucson ratepayers should not pay a penny for the remediation of this. And yet Tucson Water has has put several millions of dollars into treatment, into testing, into identifying the plume. The ADEQ is in for $3.3 million right now. That's not a tenth of what it's going to cost to clean this up. The reason that the Department of Defense is slow-walking this thing is because they reason they realize that they have a multi-billion dollar problem nationwide when it comes to PFOs. They have let this go since Rachel Carson wrote her bit back in the 60s and 70s about pollution in the water supply back in the Midwest and other sources of pollution. But this is this is the reason that I reached out to Napoli Skolnik, legal firm back in the East, brought our city manager, city attorney, mayor at the time, and Tucson Water officials in to get ourselves in the line for litigation. We are right now in line to be one of what's called a bellwether city. And that litigation comes forward, which is means that we're going to be the tip of the spear on that litigation. And we're going to be able to get our first piece of the action when it comes to the 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 funding. But this is this is a multi-million dollar, tens of millions of dollars in remediation. And our central well field is at risk and shutting down that tar plant was only because it's only been made necessary because of the the excessive contamination caused by PFOs, which came right off of TIA right after, right after, as a result of the operations by the Air National Guard. Ducey sent a letter to Biden a couple of weeks ago claiming that it was Biden administration's fault. He could have sent that letter to the during the trumpet during the Trump administration. He's playing politics with this thing. And the ratepayers in the city of Tucson are the ones that need to be held harmless. This is this is not a conversation. This is a fight.
Thank you. Andres.
So I want to tell a little bit of an anecdotal story about my childhood. And ultimately, it was a story told to me by my mother, but also stories I've heard a million times from folks who lived in the south side. They grew up and they were poisoned. They felt poisoned by their water. They did not feel safe. They did not feel it was drinkable. They did not feel like it was something, it was a resource that they could have access to. And so for me, as I take up this space and in the fall, when I accept this position, this will not be a call out. It will be a call in. All of all of the aforementioned state agencies, folks from Davis-Monthan, folks from the Air National Guards, all of those folks will be called in. And we do need to focus on treatment, testing, and remediation. And and our water department has done that over the last few years. And it has resulted poorly. And so for me, it's a call-in moment. It's a moment in which we can look at litigation for the future, but really Davis-Monthan is going to have to have have to use this water. We're going to have to use this water. And ultimately, for the viability of our of our ecology, but also the future of Tucson, we really need to focus on making sure we're not creating new enemies with new fights or old fights. We're calling them in, having the conversation in a coalition-building manner and making sure it's at the lowest cost to our taxpayers, zero or low cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Miranda, do you want your minute?
Yeah, thank you. I definitely agree with coalition building. I definitely agree that they shouldn't fall, the burden should not fall on the taxpayers. This wasn't their mess. I also think about the fact that Davis-Monthan isn't in Ward 6, you know, and that the 3M lawsuit started in 2018. And I'm just thinking right here in this moment, is this really what I would want someone who represents the area I live in to be fighting about? You know, I did roller derby. I love duking it out as much as the next person, but I think there's also a time and a place to fight and a time and a place to negotiate and collaborate and coalition build. I hear that, you know, the conversation about Our Water Tucson is fluid, and to me, what that sounds like is a lack of commitment to a meaningful policy that does fall within the purview of city council and is a meaningful way to prioritize our water supply. So I'm not saying that PFOs is not important, but I also think it's a bit of a distraction and that a blame game over whose fault it is. In the end, you know, the people are the ones who continue losing out because they're not being paid attention to enough about the issues that really affect them in their everyday lives.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to change. I mean, I'm reserving the right to go back to water issues. We're just going to run out of time. So I'm going to get to some some tricky questions here. If Tucson Police Chief Magnus is confirmed to the position in homeland security, what criteria would you personally like to see for hiring his replacement as chief of police? And Steve, you're going first.
Well, first of all, I was totally on board with when we hired Chris. I think he's a stand-up guy. He's his history is very progressive and he has made some amazing changes in the city Tucson Police Department. We were the first nation, first police agency in the nation to adopt all of the eight can't wait protocols. Chris is a leader in that. He is also very, very much at the forefront of advocating for an expansion of community resource officers and service officers out in the community. He's also very much in the forefront of advocating for multi-skill support for TPD, which is to say that we are not going to send cops to all of our calls. And so any any replacement for Chris, and frankly, it's I'm sad to see him go, but it's great for him from a, you know, from a personal professional development standpoint. Any any replacement for Chris is going to have to be somebody who comes in and supports our community safety pilot program that we have in place right now. The 14 social workers that we just had, the independent police auditor's office, we're going to have to support that and continue to support the expansion of our community service officer program, which are simply an expansion of the police force with a less than a commissioned officer responding to calls.
Thank you. Andres.
So I'm going to use this opportunity to talk about my platform because public safety is a part of that. And really, to answer the question, to to just think through what we just talked about, the community safety pilot program has hired no one at this moment. So it's, I mean, it's great to talk about the community safety pilot program and the mental and the health advisors that are going to be there. But I'm focusing on public health, and that's a priority for me. Eight Can't Wait, it didn't get us very far over this last year. Last year, we saw council member Santa Cruz bear the brunt of abuse by a police association. And so as we think through the future of someone who's going to be taking up this space, we need someone who is going to prioritize public health and think about the pre-publicize as we've thought through in our Pima County Health Department with Dr. Cullen, who has declared racism as a public health, as a public health issue. And so for me, as someone is going to be taking up this position, it really has, they have to have public health frame of thinking. And that's why I'm offering that we hire someone who is either a public health director from on the city level, but also someone who either works for the city of Tucson in the public health space. To the question of of Mr. Magnus and his future endeavors, that's great. The next person will truly have to look at policing as a different model. Look at policing in a way that is working themselves out of business, someone who is thinking about public health and incomes and social protections, education, economic development, working conditions, food security, social inclusion, structural conflict, but also affordable housing. And that's a lot to lump on police. So I think that we should focus on public safety. We should focus on community-based crime reduction through public health and not the presence of armed officers.
Thank you. Miranda.
Thanks. When it comes to the next police chief for Tucson, I believe that mindset is the most important thing. I think that we need to look for somebody for this important position who is open to accountability and having greater accountability and transparency. Who is open to accountability and having greater accountability and transparency and not behaving with defensiveness and fragility when they're. When they're called in about issues with police officers. I also think this should be somebody who supports right sizing police responsibilities. Because it's true that we've, we've leaned on our police department to do so many things and they really shouldn't be a catchall. I believe that the community safety pilot is a great step in the, in the right direction in terms of at least. Starting to acknowledge what folks have been asking for, for a long time, but we need to go even further. And really look at the systemic ways that we can change the ways that we're keeping our community safe. Officers are only one component of that. The way that we respond to incidents when they happen is only one component. And so I think that this really takes, you know, this position takes somebody who's willing to look at the reality of the situation that we have here in Tucson. And to really look at the ways that we can hold folks accountable. And keep our community safe without punishing people and putting them in cages. Because we know all that does is compound the harm. What the community has been asking for is to stop disproportionately concentrating funds and attention on the police and to spread it out and to invest in life-affirming. Services, to invest in more social services. Fourteen social workers isn't enough. Fourteen more isn't enough. We need so many more and we need. We need this kind of mentality embedded at all levels of the services that we provide as a local government. Because I don't know about any of you all, but I'm guessing that the reasons that you're not breaking into cars late at night is not because you're concerned about being punished, right? What we know is that if we improve the material conditions of folks locally. Crime is not, crime is not an issue. And when, when we're referring to crime, we're often just talking about criminalizing poverty. So, um, thank you.
Steve, do you want your minute?
Sure. Um, crime is an issue. Um, Midtown, um, I shared with you, uh, too, on the previous call that. The first three phone conversations I had three mornings ago, two mornings ago. Was of a rolling gunfight going that began at Alvernan and Speedway and wound up, uh, traveling down and shooting up some, uh, some businesses along Speedway. I hope you saw the news that night that the guy was fine, was arrested and is being held on no bond. Uh, we lose twelve percent of our cops, uh, on an average every year and we're gaining back six percent. So we're not even treading water when it comes to, uh, keeping our police agency whole. Our, um. Uh, commissioned allotment is about eight hundred and fifty-four budgeted. Uh, we're down in the seven hundreds right now and we're losing ground. Uh, yes, we need more C S Os and yes, we need more, a variety of skill sets. We put over a hundred and two million dollars into our housing development department right now. Uh, the police department is just, is under nine percent of our, of our overall budget. So we're not overspending on police. We are losing police at an alarming rate. And there are multiple reasons for that. Now I'll finish with this. Um, I read a study that was, that was commissioned that studied the. The, the, well, the, the conclusion was fifty percent, fifty-four percent of the time. Fifty-four percent of the time, the police officer reports a different set of circumstances at a scene. And what the nine-one-one operator sent the person to, uh, and the reason for that is that people are in crisis when they call nine-one-one. And that ambiguity makes it very difficult to say, send a social worker when the description might be family fight. So there are a lot of dynamics in this. It's not, it's not as simple as simply saying, let's defund the police and hire a bunch of social workers. Uh, people need to be safe in their homes and hiring cops and the rest. It's not either or, it's both and is the answer.
Thanks. Okay. So I have a few questions to choose from before we let you conclude. Um. This is going to be a question for me personally. I'm in the community too. In the thirty-three years I've lived in Midtown Tucson, there have been massive street widening projects on three. Of our major east-west boulevards through Midtown. It seems to me that an opportunity has been squandered for the creation of. You know where I'm going with this light rail down the middle of these infrastructure projects. So let us just assume that light rail is a good thing, just to stipulate that. Okay. Eat good east-west. Are there community barriers that you know of to the creation of an expanded light rail system? It seems to have worked very well in Phoenix. How did they accomplish it? Go for it. Andres.
Groovy. Thanks for choosing me first. Uh, so as we think about, okay, as we think through the. Current light rail system that we have, I think it was, uh, for all its glory, I think that it was mismanagement of funds. Because we have a hundred and third, a hundred and ninety-three million dollars and we got four miles of track. And but then when we think about these widening projects, I think about my old barber, uh, Al, my barber Al was at, uh, First and Grant. He'd been there for generations. Uh, my uncle's got haircuts from them, but because of the get grant expansion, he had to close his business. And so when we think about closing down roads and we think about expansion and we think about, um, miles of tracks. I really want to prioritize. I think the future of Tucson is multimodal. And this is something that we'll have to figure out how we pay for. Um, it could be expanding the light rail system from north side to the airport. Uh, I think that is a, a great idea. But we have to do it in a way that costs is efficient. And in Phoenix, what we saw, and I did a study with the university, with A S U a few years ago. On gentrification tied towards, um, the expansion of their light rail system. And what we saw was communities of color. Being priced out of their neighborhoods all along the line of their light rail. And so really, it's going to take a level of intentional planning when we, when we go ahead and decide to expand this, this rail system. Um, and what it's going to take is our Director of Transportation and Mobility, which I think she is. To me, she's one of the few, one of the people in the city of Tucson who hung the moon. Uh, she does amazing work. Um, I think it's really going to take our neighborhood leaders, uh, to say where the track should go. Um, whether that is a, a new master planning process, and I think it should be a part of my green master, uh, planning process that I've already talked about once before. But it's also going to take, uh, 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 a, a, a larger. Frame of planning that we have yet to see in the city of Tucson. And I'm feeling super energized because of our mayor. Uh, and her commitment to environment. Uh, I feel great with the other council members. And I can't wait to go ahead and start this job because I have a hundred percent confidence in myself. That we can get a real planning process and make it efficient, but also respect equ- equity and racial justice.
Thank you. Miranda.
Thank you. Uh, I feel like whenever I hear these questions. Part of where my mind goes is thinking about how many folks in Tucson are asked what their dreams are, what their ideal future Tucson looks like. And it's always great stuff like a light rail, you know, I haven't, I, I've lost track of how many people have asked for this kind of thing. And I want to acknowledge the streetcar and say that it caused a lot of harm, you know, when it was being constructed. And I know that I've spoken to folks in the community who are really sort of well-informed on displacement. And, uh, and land use who talked about concerns about displacement if we extend that route. And so I think it's important to keep that in mind. As we plan for the future. There's also this great study that was, uh, done by a group of capitalist students called livable streets vibrant communities. Where they did some really interesting studies that had to do with, um, the amount of folks traveling through these major arteries and. How, um, you know, high-capacity mass transit modes are way more efficient for that. We already know that we have a climate emergency on our hands. And in my mind, an emergency connotates a necessity to stop doing business as usual. And to meaningfully change our lifestyles. And so I certainly think that, um, this should be a major priority. You know, for anybody who's looking to be local leaders and address the, the needs that Tucson, Tucson has as we, as we grow our population. And move into a future of extreme heat. Um, and it's absolutely an equity issue. It's absolutely a racial justice issue. Where we know that public transportation is something that is so essential to the everyday lives of folks and the, the things that they need to get done, right? And so it's something that we should be talking about more than we are currently. I know that we're moving in that direction, totally on board with that.
Twenty seconds. Uh, Steve.
Yeah, well, read the question again, please.
You bet. Talking about with these massive street widening projects, I have observed in the last thirty years of living in Tucson. That, you know, watching Speedway, Grant Road, Broadway, it seems like an opportunity that might have been squandered here. For the creation of light rail right down the middle of these, uh, these widening projects. What are their community barriers to the creation of an expanded light rail? It seems to have worked very well in Phoenix and how did they accomplish it?
Okay, they, they accomplished it with two hundred and seventy million dollars worth of federal funding. You know, we, that, that money just doesn't fall off a tree and into your pocket. But the Biden administration, uh, just recently identified, while they're trying to get through this whole transportation infrastructure bill. Uh, the sort of bottlenecked in, in Congress right now. I think everything's bottlenecked in Congress, but that's a piece of what's there. Uh, so it's going to take significant federal funding. Uh, we had very, very significant partnerships from our federal delegation, uh, when we got the streetcar funding. One of the interesting pieces about that though, was that that did not follow, that, that four-mile track does not follow a, a road widening. Project. It really followed through the university area, down, down Main Gate, Fourth Avenue through downtown over the Mercado. So we have had the conversations when we were talking about the RTA widening on Broadway as to. Uh, do we leave capacity down the middle of Broadway for an eventual streetcar or bus rapid transit? Uh, the capacity is there. It's going to take significant dollars. But again, talking to the residents along the way, because while we may have a very viable, uh, commercial corridor. On the front side of it, the backside of those, of those businesses are people's front yards. So it's got to be a comprehensive community conversation. So your question was, are there community, uh, roadblocks? There are community conversations to be had. I'm not sure that they're roadblocks, but they certainly have to, have to be had. The roadblock is, is the funding measure, is the funding piece.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're going to end the questioning there. Um, for the audience, um, each of the candidates has agreed. To, um, continue answering these questions in written form, the questions that we didn't get to ask. And I know there are many questions on the Q and A that we didn't get to. Some of these are great, great questions. We, we really appreciate the input. But now I think we have to, uh, we've run out of time. So what I'm going to do is ask each speaker. For their closing statement. And since Steve, you spoke last, I'm going to ask Andres to do his three-minute closing first.
Didn't I just speak first?
I'm so confused. Yes, but you didn't get to speak again. So you still, you get to go now.
Oh, okay, cool. I was, I was, I was prepared to go last. That's okay. That's fine. Uh, so let's go ahead and start that timer. Um, Ward six is going to need someone with federal, state and local policy experience. I've got all those. Worked for Congressman Ron Barber. Worked at the city of Tucson, um, and currently working at, at our state level, uh, on policy. And so. When we look for our representatives, we want to see ourselves. Uh, and I didn't see that, which is why I decided to jump into this race. Uh, I can't imagine, I can't wait to be your elected representative and earn your trust. Uh, in this historic election, Ward six will elect their first Afro-Latino and first black representative, uh, since the nineteen eighties. My whole career has been dedicated to centering the voices of everyday community that helped raise me. Get me through college and help me become a housing expert. This is our home that is housing, opportunity, mobility, justice and environmental justice. And these are my priorities. Ward six deserves representation that is going to prioritize our neighborhood concerns and has the experience of doing that. I did that in the Ward one office. My professional achievements have prepared me just as much as my personal achievements. I learned what it's like, um, I learned about mobility and accessibility as a kid cruising through Reed Park. And my uncle's low riders on Easter weekend. Environmental, I'm, my bad, uh, economic development. Through dollar tickets at spring training at Tucson Electric Park. And I learned again about mobility through riding my bike through the city of Tucson. And so I'm going to use the last bit of my time to talk about, um, something very important to me. And today is my anniversary. Five years with my partner, been with her since I was, uh, for four, for fourteen years, just about. And we were able to find place and home in the city of Tucson. For me, this is, uh, extremely important because she has allowed me the space to run for office, but has supported me through all of this. And so, uh, that is my thank you to her. Um, and I also want to invite the community to come out next weekend. Juneteenth is an important holiday for me and it, it marks the point in which slaves found out. After the emancipation proclamation, proclamation, two years after, uh, about their freedom. And so we're going to be doing a mobility morning, Juneteenth mobility boarding, morning at Reed Park. Uh, from eight AM to nine AM. And I would hope that Miranda and Steve can join us as well. This is supposed to be multimodal. So everyone has an experience to walk around Reed Park, learn about Juneteenth and get to know their elected representative. So I hope to see everyone there. Thank you, Angelina. Uh, thank you, Steve and Miranda for coming. Pima County Democratic Party, thank you so much for inviting me into this space. Uh, I honor it and hopefully in the future you see more of me.
Thank you, Andres. Steve, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, and also thanks to the Pima County Democratic Party for hosting this, uh, all the people who've been participating. Uh, Miranda and Andres for throwing your hats in the ring. Uh, these are not easy jobs. In fact, these are incredibly important positions. By way of example, uh, calling my answer about P F O S playing the blame game demonstrates a fundamental misunderstanding of the dynamics. Of that issue. Continuity is going to be absolutely, absolutely critical to this. I'm in regular contact with Senator Kelly. And Ron Barber on this issue. Uh, they are fighting at the federal level right now for funding to help remediate that issue. It is an, it is an existential issue for this region. Uh, without that being cleaned up and it's not a blame game, it's getting the Department of Defense to own up to the, to their culpability. They have admitted. That they hosed the, uh, contaminant into our waters, into our soil. They have admitted that they dumped it down into the sewer system. That's the reason we're in litigation. That's not a sit, situation where you sit down at, at a table and try and figure out who's playing. Let's get your checkbook out and make us whole. So, um, I circle back to the beginning. My office is top drawer when it comes to constituent services. And my advocacy, I'm not going to take a backseat to anybody. We've just gone through, through four years of some really divisive and personal ugly politics. We're better than that. Uh, but my record's clear for all to see. You know, we've got some extremely important, extremely important issues in front of us. We've got P F O S, we've got the RTA, we've got five G. We've got water rates, we've got budget security. We have so many fundamental issues that we have to get our arms around. The continuity is going to be key. My campaign has been endorsed by former mayor Tom Volgy, Jonathan Rothschild, Kirsten Engel, all Ward six residents. Uh, Randy Freeze, Jim Colby, these are people who understand how public policy is crafted. And they understand the need for somebody who has the ability to bring the competing factions together in the same room at the same time and hammer out agreements. Or when you need to step up to the plate and dig your heels in and say that what you're doing is wrong and we demand change. So that's what I'm offering to you. I'd, I'd appreciate your support in the primary and, uh, thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, Steve. Miranda.
Thank you. Uh, so you know, elected officials are public servants and running for office isn't about being a special person. It's about humility. It's about asking people to trust you and then earning that trust every day. We need leaders that leave their ego at the door, listen to feedback from people directly affected by the issues and have an open mind to the solutions they offer. That's why if I was elected to, if I'm elected to represent Ward six on the city council, I will talk at, I will talk with you and not at you. I'll listen to you and ask you what needs to be done and not tell you why, what I think is correct. The racial injustices and social disparities we've faced as a community this past year are not one-off circumstances from which we hope to return to normal. The pandemic has only amplified existing failures that our community and country have grappled with for centuries. We're facing the public health crisis of racism. A climate emergency, a growing eviction tsunami, all of which are the result of not addressing root causes on a systemic level. We now find ourselves with a choice. We can uphold the status quo or we can rebuild our systems to be more equitable and just. Going into politics was never my plan, but as a community organizer, union sister, educator. And an ambitious queer Asian-American woman, I've been disrupting the status quo my whole life. I personally understand how intimidating and inaccessible it can be for people to engage in our civic processes. Like running for office is totally, totally terrifying. No one understands Tucson's needs better than Tucson's residents. If city residents don't feel connected to their local government, then we need to find a way to change that experience. People like us deserve a seat at the table. We deserve a leader that knows that a house, that housing affordability, workforce development. Sustainable transportation options and funding for social services are what Tucson needs. Not tax breaks for wealthy developers and punishing people for being poor. Our campaign isn't alone in these concerns. Groups like C W A Local Seven Thousand, the C W A Arizona State Council. Pima County Young Democrats, the Young Democrat, the Democratic Socialists of America. Kat Ripley of the Pima Community College Governing Board, as well as the National Progressive PAC Run for Something have. have all thrown their support behind me because they can see that I'm driven by the bigger picture, not petty political one-upsmanship and making a name for myself. And we've actually got another exciting endorsement announcement coming soon. Our elected representatives have a basic responsibility to safeguard the health, safety and wellbeing of people with an awareness that money is not the only indicator of worth and that equity and sustainability must be meaningfully considered in all decisions. What do our policies say about our values as a city, as a community? Whose comfort are we a priority in these conversations? I believe that any influence that can be gained, any influence or power that might be gained from holding a leadership position is totally meaningless if it's not shared. I have a very collective vision for this office and I want to invite you in to be a part of it. I envision a Tucson that's shaped by our collective dreams and not frozen in place by fear of the unknown. Thank you. Sorry, Greer, you're muted.
You made it through the whole thing without doing that, Greer.
Dang. So I want to start that over again. Thank you for your time and attention today and we appreciate your willingness to meet the voting public in a forum such as this. And we will send you more questions that you can answer if you like. And we will put your recorded answers in a link on a PDF in conjunction with this recorded forum. I know these questions were really hard. I know that many of them could have taken hours and hours to talk about or years and years. So we appreciate your conciseness and all of you, your passion for the service that you're doing. So thanks very much.
Thank you, I'll take care.
I guess we're going to another meeting, right?